Please join me in saluting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council has been made aware of the passing of a Bridgewater military veteran. Mr. Peter T. Lennon passed on May 26th and served with the combat engagements in the United States Marine Corps during the Vietnam War. I'd ask that all those in attendance join us for a moment of silence to honor Mr. Lennon. Thank you. The first item of business tonight is the approval of meeting minutes from our previous meeting held on May 23rd, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Council Robinson is abstaining?
Abstaining, yes.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All those abstaining say aye.
Aye, abstaining, thank you.
The motion passes. Announcements from the President. I do have just one quick announcement for the awareness of the public. The town council every year reorganizes the town council committees, so I did want to share what the new committees are. The Budget and Finance Committee of the Town Council will be chaired by Councillor Gallagher with Councillors George and Lindy on that. Rules and procedures. We'll have Councillor Chase as the Chair with Councillors Murphy and McKinnon. Strategic Planning Committee will have Councillor Moore as the Chair with Councillors Robinson and Perry. Community and Economic Development will have Councillor Robinson as the Chair with Councillors McKinnon and Chase participating. The Downtown Revitalization Committee will have Councillor Perry as Chair with Councillors Lindy and Murphy participating. The Public Safety Committee will have Councillor George as Chair with Councillors Gallagher and McKinnon participating. The Gaming Committee will have Councillor Lindy as Chair with Councillors Chase and Gallagher participating. And then we have a Review Committee that will be chaired by Councillor George with Councillors Robinson and Murphy participating. Thank you. That is the only other announcement from the President. We can move on to Item C, Proclamation. We have no proclamations this evening. Item D, Citizens Open Forum. We welcome and encourage public feedback and participation. If anyone from the public would like to address the council, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and kindly keep your remarks to three minutes. I will give you the little three-minute signal when we're getting close, and I would ask that you try to respect that. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Let me put my glasses on before I get going. My name is Steve Giaberti. I live on 1016 South Street. I'd like to address an illegal drone flight over my property on April 28th by the Bridgewater Police. I've lived in Bridgewater since 2004. We own a large acreage of property, about 13 acres. We bought a solar development to our east and are set back from South Street approximately 300 feet and our property line extending over 900 feet from South Street. On March 7th, I emailed Officer Fernandez with an inquiry about restrictions, if any, for shooting on your own property. On March 14th, Officer Fernandez stating the only restrictions are that you need to be at least 500 feet from dwellings and businesses. I also met with him in person at the station on April 4th and discussed the matter again. On April 28th, a complaint about gunfire noise was raised by a neighbor over 1,000 feet from my back property. The original call was simply for noise. Noise. Just like the thousands of leaf blowers, motorcycles, and lawn tractors that generate noise each day. Once the police determined the complainant was more than 500 feet from any suspected gunfire, that should have been the end of the call. But it wasn't. A simple scan of his neighborhood would have shown there was no one firing guns within 500 feet of his house. However, curiosity and a lack of anything better to do that got the best of them that day, and someone made the decision to take the town's drone, our drone, for a joyride. They don't get to fly over your daughter and her friends having a pool party. They don't get to fly over you while you're leaf blowing, and they certainly don't get to fly over me while I'm doing nothing illegal. The flight was flown without authorization. The camera was turned on and the flight was recorded against policy. It was flown without regard to privacy. It was flown without a search warrant, also against policy. It was flown in violation of FAA regulations in a hazardous manner over people in violation of FAA regulations defining visual line of sight. In all, there are a minimum of six policy violations and five FAA violations. I tried at least four times to schedule a time to meet with the officer who flew the drone, Officer Chris Derondo, and then Lieutenant Scott Heil. All emails were ignored. The chief finally sent me a brief note after the fact, but by then I was on to redressing my grievance through other avenues, as is my First Amendment right. The Bridgewater Police have an annual budget of approximately $6 million.
10 seconds remaining.
Of that, only $10,000 is spent on training, and this is in training among other things, while over $15,000 is spent on ammunition for target shooting. That should give you an indication of priorities. The cost per resident for our police budget-
We are up at time. I apologize. If you do have remaining material, feel free to email it to the town council. The three-minute is a policy boundary.
Do you just want it? I have it all printed.
If you do have copies, feel free to distribute to the councilors. Yeah, you can provide it to me and I can distribute to the councilors. Yep. Thank you. And thank you. It is our policy to not respond to public comment, but we will look at the materials. Thank you. Do we have anyone else from the public who would like to speak?
Good evening, council. Ed Ivaldi, Boxwood Lane. I'm here to offer feedback on the desire to have more citizens involved in town government. I recently noticed a message on a town sign placed at the nursing home at the intersection of Route 104 and South Street that read, "Get Involved." Not sure if it's still there, but it did get my attention and caused me to reflect back on a group of seven citizens that just did get involved in early 2020 by volunteering to be part of the Charter Review Committee. Their first meeting was held on May 27th, 2020, and they continued to meet twice a month and every week during the last several months of their effort, ultimately meeting 32 times over the course of the year in order to complete their work on time. On June 21st, 2021, the final charter recommendations were delivered to this body. Fast forward to today. In two weeks, it'll be two years since the committee finished its work. But the question remains, why hasn't anything been done on the work that was submitted from this committee? It is certainly understandable that priorities change month to month, and you all know you were very busy over the last couple of years. But when a group of citizens agrees to get involved and spends a year doing work for the town that is essentially ignored, what kind of message does that send to the people of Bridgewater who may be considering stepping up to offer their time and talents to the town? If the goal is to encourage more citizens to volunteer their time and effort to help the town and join committees, then the town needs to ensure that their efforts are not wasted, but to be valued and ultimately used for the good of the town. So I'll leave you with these two questions, which hopefully someone can address later on during councillor comments. How can this body ensure that citizens who decide to get involved feel valued in their efforts? And number two, what is your plan, now that it's been two years, for addressing the Charter Review Committee recommendations? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else from the public who would like to speak?
Good evening, everyone. Sam Baumgartner, 60 Short Street. Since Mr. Ivaldi brought up the sign by the nursing home, I guess I can reveal a little secret. My wife and I are doing the signs. We took it over from Mrs. Hunt and whoever else was helping her, so if you don't like the signs, talk to me. But really, I came because I just wanted to share a little revelation that I had during the pride ceremony last week, which was quite impressive with, we think, over 80 people. And I was listening to the comments of the students and how empowering it was for them to speak there and feel welcome, and then looking across the street at the library's pride sign and reading the library's newsletter about all the pride events that are going on and the materials that are available, then getting an email from the senior center saying, "We have pride events. We're celebrating Pride Month, et cetera." And I'm thinking, we've got the town council, you folks with your resolution and your support, the library, the senior center, and I said, "This town rocks." We have really become a very welcoming, inclusive community, which started with you folks passing the resolution and supporting it three years ago. So I just wanted to thank you for all of that and just let you know that that was something that popped into my brain and was very powerful about what this town stands for. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else from the community that would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close out Citizens Open Forum and move on to Agenda Item E, Appointments. Before we process this, I just have a quick question for the town manager. We did receive an email question about the terms. And looking at these, for example, we have 2023 through 2025. There was a question on whether or not that's a three-year term or a two-year term, and if we have it, the start date of that. I was hoping you might be able to clarify before we vote.
Certainly. I think on a couple of these, we were late last year in doing reappointments, or we skipped it. I don't recall the circumstances. So I think the 23 to 25 is essentially appointing for the balance of what would have been the term last year, if that makes sense.
Understood. So it's the remaining, it's a remainder of the existing term?
Correct. Correct. I believe that's the issue.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. So the first one we have is Community Preservation Committee, Carlton Hunt, reappointment for the term of 2023 to 2025. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All those abstaining say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item B, Conservation Committee, reappointment. Eileen Prisco, reappointment term 2023 to 2026. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All those abstaining say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Item C, Disability Commission, reappointment. We have Lorraine Carosa, reappointment term 2023 to 2026. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All those abstaining say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Item D, we have the Energy Commission, reappointment. Carlton Hunt, reappointment term 2023 to 2025. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All those abstaining say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you to all of the volunteers. We appreciate the participation and the involvement. Moving on to Item F, Hearings. I will see. I just ordered. The time is 7:14, and I'm officially opening the hearing for Ordinance D, FY23012, General Ordinance Section D, Section 10-D-5, Flow Neutral Regulation, Sewer Regulation. This hearing has been duly advertised in the enterprise and on the town's website and may be finally voted this evening. For awareness, rules and procedures met on 5/25/23 and voted 3 to 0 to recommend. I'll defer to the town manager for an update on the order.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. The flow-neutral regulations, in a very basic sense, in a very global 30,000-foot sense, are required for us to adopt in order to secure low or no-interest loan funding through the State Revolving Fund, also in order for us to qualify for potential, excuse me, loan forgiveness. The regulations, as drafted, established a baseline flows of May 2020, when we did the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, as the permitted flows. And it gives us, essentially gives us a tool that we can use to manage our wastewater flows more directly, although most of the tools that we need are sort of planted in state regulation, DEP regulation, but this sort of brings them all together on a local level so that people can see locally. Essentially, the overall objective obviously is to control the incoming flow to the wastewater plant and create a mechanism to better predict what those flows will be in the future. It applies both to Title V and to properties that are currently hooked up to the wastewater system. It does allow the town, by council vote, to require hookups in areas of town that are particularly sensitive, environmentally sensitive. I will stress that we don't have any of those currently where people are required to hook up to the sewer system, but it does allow the town to do that, as does DEP regulations as well. So this is just sort of mimicking a lot of the DEP regulations. It currently assigns a fairly generous flow to every property in town, whether or not you're Title V or on the sewer system, and it grants to the town the ability to grant a variance. If a project comes and requires additional sewer flow, it does allow us the ability to grant a variance, much like the ZBA might grant a variance on a building project. And it also does preclude the transferability of flow from one property to another, which is an important point because prior DEP regulations did allow that, but this DEP now has changed tact and will not allow a transfer of flow from one property to another. And that means if you want to put 10 bedrooms in your house and your neighbor, and you're only allowed to do, say, five bedrooms under the regulation, you would have to get a variance. You couldn't simply go to your neighbor and say, "Hey, I'll buy, you know, four bedrooms worth of flow from you." So it does, that is a little bit of a change in state regulation over prior years. So that is essentially the regulations. As I said at the outset, it's a required vote by the legislative body of the town in order to qualify for a state revolving fund. And the state revolving fund is well, well worth the effort, especially in this case where we're spending right now about $60 million on the wastewater treatment plant. So that's very essentially it, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any general questions from the public? Seeing none. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in favor? Seeing none. Oh, sorry.
I will say I did not get a chance to read the regulation because I couldn't find it on the website, and it wasn't in your packet that I could find. However, I've had some experience with treatment plants, and I think this is probably a really good thing, so I would encourage you to vote yes.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the public wish to speak in favor? Seeing none. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Are there any questions from the town councilors? Councillor Perry?
Yep. I just wanted to mention I got together with the town manager to sponsor this ordinance and again, would encourage the council to support this so we can get the funding that this will bring. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Perry. Any other councillor questions?
I'd like to make a friendly amendment in Section 10D5-2. Applicability, the chapter shall, and I believe that should be "apply," not "APPL."
Page that's on, councillor?
In the packets, it's page nine of 27, 5-2.
Oh, I see. Section 5-2, it's the fourth word in under applicability?
Yeah. So I think it says the chapter shall apply. Probably kind of important, but I don't know.
Do we have a second to the motion? We have a second and a motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of a motion to have a friendly amendment of Section 5-2 applicability to change APPL to APPLY as a spelling change, correction. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All those abstaining say aye. Motion passes unanimously. The time is 7:21, and I'm officially closing the hearing. I'd entertain a motion to approve as amended.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All those abstaining say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item G, License Transactions. We have none. Moving on to Agenda Item H, Presentations. We have none. Moving on to Agenda Item I, Town Manager's Report. I'll defer to the town manager for the High Street Bridge closure and the remaining reports.
Thank you, Mr. President. It seemed like a long time ago when I started talking about the High Street closure on June 15th. June 15th is coming up next week. It's a Thursday. We are still on track for a closure of the High Street Bridge as of June 15th with a reopening of about October 15th, mid-October. And lots of notice has gone out. We did send out cards directly to as many people as we could figure out would be directly impacted by the closure. We've placed the electronic notice boards down there. We've got press releases going out, shared via Facebook and the press, and so we should be in decent shape. We did have, if you recall, a test run where, it wasn't a planned test run, but we did have to close down High Street at one point for utility relocation, and we had not anticipated that we would close down. We did close down. It was a bit of a mess, but we used that as a little bit of a test case. And we don't think, given that that was, I believe, in March or April, we don't think that it will be as impactful now that the university is out, now that the schools will be out. So we're hopeful that it will not, it will definitely inconvenience folks, but we're hoping that it'll be as little as possible over the next four months. So as I say, it's coming up. If you have any questions, I'm certainly happy to answer.
Do we have any questions for the town manager? Okay.
All right. I think council wanted to have a sense of our roadway plan this year. I will preface it by saying most of our road improvements are funded by Chapter 90. Chapter 90 is state funding through the Department of Transportation. And on an annual basis, we get an amount that's calculated by formula based on road miles and a number of other factors, primarily road miles, though. And our annual allotment is usually in the $700,000 range, which sounds like a lot. It's really not very much, and I'll give you an example of that in a minute. So this summer, and currently underway, Maple, Maple, we're replacing the sidewalks, which we have done, and then we'll be repaving. If weather cooperates, we'll be repaving this week. The same is true with Spring Hill. That will receive a new asphalt sidewalk and then a repaving. Park Terrace, as we're doing in partnership with BSU. Church Street, we'll be looking to repave. None of these streets require any utility or drainage work, which is one of the reasons that we can knock these off fairly easily, with one exception. Union Street, we're repaving. And combined, just to give you a sense, because folks know Union Street, they know Church Street, together, that's a $300,000 repaving job, and that's a simple repave. So that gives you sort of an order of magnitude of the amount that it costs to actually repave. Winter Street, I know residents on Winter Street have been anxious to get that road rebuilt. That road will be rebuilt. We have worked on the engineering in-house. We had significant savings, I might add. And the drainage will have to be addressed on that side of Winter Street. And we'll also then basically rebuild the road and then repave or pave the newly rebuilt road. That Winter Street project will cost us about $500,000. Again, just sort of as an order of magnitude, if you know Winter Street. And then finally, the library driveway will get a little bit of attention. What you see down on Maple, Church, no, I'm sorry, not Maple, but what you see down on Church and Union and the library driveway right now is just the initial binder, and then that'll get a finish coat, hopefully this week, if weather holds. So we did, just on a different note, on our critical, five critical roadways, we're in a little bit of a holding pattern due to our need to accelerate the BP debt exclusion question on the annual ballot in April, and we therefore had to push the roads debt exclusion to next April. But that's, we'll figure out a way to deal with that. But in the meantime, we are awaiting notification of any grant funding. We submitted several grant funding opportunities, or possibilities, I should say, for Flag Street. We have the full plan ready to go on Flag Street, and we will be doing that hopefully prior to next April, but if not, then after an April vote, next April. We are in the process of working to survey and do some of the office work, preliminary right-of-way work on the Deerfield neighborhood, which is, I think, as you know, is severely waterlogged, to put it simply. And then we're also continuing our engineering work on South and Vernon. So we are working. We've got a good amount of work to do before we address some of those. Those are huge capital projects, and I did include with, not in your packet, but on your meeting materials, I think I included the policy just as a reminder of what we go through when we determine what roads to re, what roads to address on an annual basis. So that's there for you. And we finally, we had a grant for work on Main and Broad Street, which we secured a couple of years ago. We were not able to get that work done, and so we should be able to get that work done now sometime in the fall. So we're looking forward to that. If you recall, that was mostly pedestrian safety, addressing things such as pedestrian safety, doing bump outs, redone crosswalks, and so forth. So that project will be coming up, I'm happy to say. So that's what I have on the roads, but again, happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the town manager on roads? Okay, maybe just a quick comment. So I just want to reiterate that you said the five critical roadways, and the reason those aren't sort of going now is because they are such, they require such significant capital investment, and they also have some infrastructure underneath them that needs to be considered and done as part of the project, is it?
Correct. That's absolutely correct. They're major rebuilding jobs to the tune of $5, $6, $7 million apiece, and those, obviously, we can't fund through Chapter 90. So between grant funding, which is not always forthcoming, and the potential debt exclusion, we're going to have to look at being very creative how we finance the rebuilding. Those roads are critical to us. The five are critical to us because they've got failing drainage, subsurface drainage, which is a concern for us. They also have water line replacements that need to be done, and I think, I don't think we have any sewer line replacements, but we do have water line replacements and sidewalk construction on most of those roads, so.
Thank you. And if I remember, is it Flags, it's Vernon Street, South Street, Cross Street. Do you remember?
Deerfield neighborhood.
Deerfield, okay, thank you. Okay. No additional questions? Item C? It's parameters for use of drone surveillance by the Bridgewater Police Department?
I will give you a little bit of an update on that. I can't speak to any specific cases, because I don't, I'm not knowledgeable about any specific cases, but I can tell you that the town does own a drone, which we have owned for a number of years. We do use it under very tight policy and procedure restrictions, a copy of which I think you have in front of you, and I can say we've successfully used the drone for things such as missing persons, missing boaters, lost hikers, and a very small handful of situations where sending a police officer into a scenario might be dangerous. Very basically, I won't read you the policy, but the policy basically says only trained and authorized personnel may deploy the drone when in the performance of official duties. Only the chief may, or as designee, may authorize use of the drone. Only used under very specific circumstances, which include situational awareness, which is to understand the nature and scope of an incident. Forest fire might be an example of that. Search and rescue, which is sort of self-explanatory. Tactical deployment, where there are incidents, for example, might involve hostages and so forth. Visual perspective, where crowd control issues might be, might be at issue, or traffic management at a bad accident scene might be an issue. It's also used for scene documentation, so that means documenting a very large scene that has been, suffered some disaster, and a good example is snowstorms. You know, the snow back in 2015, the snowstorms required a lot of documentation from the town in order to seek FEMA reimbursement. FEMA reimbursement applications are extremely detailed, and the more documentation we provide, the better possibility there is for us to seek reimbursement. So, that's another area or way that we might use the drone. We do have procedures that have to be followed. Town must have all FAA licenses and certifications. Only trained and licensed operators may use the drone. All flights are documented and logged in one central location, and where there's a reasonable expectation that evidence of a crime will be collected via drone, then a search warrant is secured prior. A couple of the rules, under no circumstances may any officer copy, alter, or erase, et cetera, any multimedia content that comes off of the drone or the camera. All multimedia files are stored securely. All flight data and files are audited on a regular basis, and annual trainings on drone operations, as well as local, state, and federal laws that pertain to the operation or deployment of drones are also trained. So, that is, that just gives you an idea of how and why we would use the drone. Again, I can't, I can't speak to any specific instances, but I can tell you that we, I've seen footage of, from the drone, especially where it's used to find, we had a missing boater incident a couple of years ago, it was pretty impressive that we could use it in that way, and we found the missing folks and were able to bring them in. So, it's a useful tool, I fully understand, I think the police chief fully understands that the potential for misuse is always there, which is why we have pretty strict guidelines and circumstances under which they would contemplate the use of such a drone. So, that's what I have, but again, I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Council Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. What are the recourses or penalties for any violations on this policy?
The officer, if there was, obviously, it'd be an officer that was using it, if there was any misuse of the drone, there would be discipline through the police department up to and including dismissal.
Okay. So, if a citizen ever were to have a complaint, is every single complaint investigated?
It is.
Okay, and is that report shared with you?
It's not always shared with me proactively. If I ask for it, it certainly is shared, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the town manager? Yep, Council George?
Mr. President, through you to the town manager. So, in an instance where recordings are not associated with a crime or investigation, does the public have the right to look at a specific recording if they can identify, you know, the place and time, not look at everything? Does the public have the right to see that?
I don't believe it's necessarily a public record, but I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, I can find out.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from the councilors? Counsel Robinson?
Actually, it's a question for Counsel George. Do you mean in terms of if somebody wanted to do a Freedom of Information Act request?
I'm just asking what the policy would be. I mean, I know in certain circumstances, recordings are privileged and things of that nature, but if it's being used and there's nothing identified, per se, you know, does the public have a right to ask, which I don't know the answer to?
Yeah, I think it's a good question.
Do we have any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to Item J, discussions. We have no discussions. Item K, committee reports, do we have any committee reports? We have none. Moving on to Item L, legislation for action. We have Order 0 FY23052, municipal electric aggregation. I will defer to the, actually, we have a few. We have, this is sponsored by Counselor Lindy, Counselor Chase, and Counselor Gallagher. Do either of those councilors wish to speak to this before we defer to the town manager?
I'll make just some comments, Mr. President. We, the Rules and Procedures Committee did meet on May 25th and voted unanimously to approve recommendation to the council. As you know, there's been recent public input on this matter. We've had some testimony here before the council, some of which delivered by Dr. Hunt and by a citizen of the town, supporting the notion of the town engaging in energy aggregation. And it is a, it is a matter that does require an ordinance, and you may be aware that throughout the Commonwealth, about half of the cities and towns have now, in fact, adopted an ordinance to do this, and it's increasingly popular. I just actually noticed on the City of Boston site, just in the past day or so, that they're seeking public input on the same, on the same matter. The net effect of this would be, of course, to permit the town to negotiate for a lower residential electric rate for users in the town, which, in my understanding, would be automatically available to electricity users. They would have, individual users would have the opportunity to opt out if they so chose. But throughout the Commonwealth, there have been great cost savings to residential electricity users who take advantage of this program. So, we have, by this measure, we have urged that the town manager engage in necessary preliminary feasibility studies and consultations to arrive at the feasibility for adopting a plan here.
Thank you, Counsel Chase. Counselor Lindy, is there anything that you'd like to add?
I don't need to add to that. Counselor Chase did a fabulous job of summarizing it.
Great, thanks. And again, it's, this is an order for the town council to request that the town manager prepare a feasibility study in consultation with the Department of Energy Resources, and if needed, in partnership with a consultant. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any additional discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All those abstaining say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Item N, sorry, M, old business, we have none. Item N, new business, we have Order 0 FY23061, transfer order, end-of-year transfers. I'll defer to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for councilors that have been here for a while. This is a recognizable order, comes this time of year, June, this is about every year, and this is our opportunity to balance all of our line items with excesses and overages, and this year, the total amount balanced out is $412,111. That's not money that's being appropriated or raised, that's money that's already been appropriated, which is reallocating it.
Thank you. Just reallocating it to the items that, where we ran overages, so that's about, if my recollection is right, that's about one-half of 1% of our total budget, which is pretty good. Usually, it hovers somewhere between 1% and a little bit less.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All those abstaining say aye. Motion passes unanimously. The next item is 0 FY23062, transfer order, WTR, High Street Treatment Plant Completion. I'll defer to the town manager for an overview.
Thank you, Mr. President. This order simply funds items that are not eligible for revolving fund borrowing, and it's taking money retained earnings out of the wastewater, sorry, the water fund and putting it into the water plant to balance out that project.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All those abstaining say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Item C, 0 FY23063, transfer order, CPA transfer to Memorial Building Capital Project Fund. I'll defer to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, and the council knows, the Memorial Building renovation went over budget, and so we are looking for $95,000 from the Community Preservation Fund to cover those things that the Community Preservation Fund, the overages on those things that the Community Preservation Fund had allocated money towards for that building renovation. You'll also recall that we voted a little bit of money out of the Capital Stabilization Fund last meeting. This would supplement that and wrap up the Memorial Building Capital Project by June 30th.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All those abstaining say aye. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to Item D, 0 FY23064, ratification of 2% COLA increase of retirement benefits. I'll defer to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, this order would ratify a decision made by the Plymouth County Retirement Board and also endorsed by the Plymouth County Commissioners to add a two, one-time 2% COLA increase to retirement benefits, and that increase would apply only to the base, the retirement base, which is $16,000. So, if you were making $16,000 as a retirement annually from work in the municipality in Bridgewater, you would get an additional 2% if you were making $32,000, $38,000, double that, then effectively, you'd be getting a 1% COLA, because you, it's, the COLA only adds to the $16,000 base. So, probably made it much more confusing than it really is, but that's how it works. It's, it's been, as I said, it's been ratified by the Plymouth County Retirement Board, or voted by the Plymouth County Retirement Board, ratified by the Plymouth County Commissioners, and the member towns need to vote by two-thirds to also endorse that slight COLA increase.
I just want to confirm, you said by statute, we have to vote by June 30th? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions for the town manager on it? Counsel Lindy?
Through the president, through the town manager, is there a total cost, estimated cost?
The estimated cost to the town of Bridgewater would be $54,000 out of $4.7 million retirement assessment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions for the town manager? Counsel Robinson?
You said it was a one-time? Okay. Did we do this in previous years, in recent history?
We have not done this in my, during my tenure, so I don't believe it's been done in the last, at least the last 10 years. And I think it's a reflection, it was something the legislature permitted retirement systems to do, and I think it was a recognition that inflation has far outpaced, you know, sort of the standard in COLA increases that retirement boards offer on a year-to-year basis.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for the town manager? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All those abstaining say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Item Zero, sorry, Item O, citizen comments. Would anyone from the public like to speak?
Thank you, Steve Jabirdi, again. I'd just like to make a couple of comments on the drone policy. I think it's clear that we have a policy that isn't being adhered to. I think what else needs to be done, I think there should be a deep audit done and see how many other drone flights have been illegal, like the one over my property, and see if we have a systemic problem in that police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Item P, council comment, counselor comments. We'll start with Counselor Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, I'd like to follow up on a comment made by Mr. Baumgarten earlier. The Pride flag raising took place in recent days before the, in the front of the Academy Building, and it was well-attended, and I thought it was a very well-organized event, and I'm personally very happy to see that it has become an annual, an annual feature on our annual calendar. So, it's, it's really very, it speaks very well, I think, of the council and of the citizens of the town, and I'm very pleased to see it take place. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, just similar to Counselor Chase, I just wanted to thank all those that have been involved in the past events, the Memorial Day event, the Pride event, and the upcoming Juneteenth event and the Fourth of July Firework Committee. It's nice to see and hear. I've heard from many people, people on my street, people reaching out about these events, and so thank you to all those who've been participating and looking forward to a few more events coming up as well. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. Counsel George?
Thank you, Mr. President. No comments tonight. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
No comments from me either, but thank you for, well, just maybe one comment, just a quick thank you to people who always show up for public comment or want to address the council. Showing up in person really counts, thank you.
Counsel Perry?
Thank you. Yeah, just wanted to, number one, thank those that put the names back in to be reappointed to committees, Carl Tenhut, Eileen Prisco, and Lorraine Carosa. Again, thank you for your service and your hard work on those committees. I also wanted to mention the Memorial Day services. We had a wonderful day, had a nice brief service, and a number of people did come on out. I just encourage more people to come out in the future and hopefully get a bigger turnout in future years. Again, want to acknowledge the Pride Day, I couldn't make it myself, but I'm glad to hear that it was well-attended. We have Juneteenth coming up, I was certainly going to try and make that myself, and I want to also mention to continue to support the Fourth of July Committee. I see they are about 40,000, and they're fundraising, so they're doing a good job, but I think they need at least 50, so keep the donations coming in, and hopefully they're on track to put on an event for us this year. And finally, I just want to extend condolences to the families of David Moore and Kathy Moore. They just recently lost their mother, who was 95, so again, I want to extend condolences to the Moore family. That's all I got, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. Counsel McKinnon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to bring up, on Thursday, at Black Hat Brewery, from 4:00 to 8:00, they're doing a doing a fundraiser for the Fourth of July event. Then on Saturday, on Spring Street, Fire for Effect has another farmer's market event for the Fourth of July, and hopefully by the end of the weekend, we'll see that thermometer up to around 4,500 or something like that, if we can get some good turnouts, you know? I've been trying to find a dunk tank for the event to dunk the counselor, but every company I reach out to, they're either booked with their dunk tank or they don't have it. So if anyone knows where to get one...
There's Grant Trunk, too, huh? They don't have it, they have just a bucket. I want a dunk tank. I want a dunk bucket falling on my head.
Wait, does that mean you volunteer?
Yeah. Five balls, you know, $10 or something, three balls for five, I don't know. We'll figure something out, but that should be a good day on Spring Street. Speaking of Spring Street, I'm not going to talk about the horrific events that happened, but most of you probably did see what I wrote online, and it was good to see the community come together for the Oakham family. I've known them for two decades, almost two decades. I'm friends, very close with her daughter, and it was just good to see the community come together on the GoFundMe for her. I mean, I saw plenty of people's name on there that don't even know who they are. Ms. Robinson's name was on the list, it goes on, and I just pray that our community and surrounding communities never have to go through something like that again. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McKinnon. Counsel Lindy?
So echoing Brad's comments, I think that's what Bridgewater is all about. And on a less serious note, or the dunk tank, it'll ruin my hair, so I can't volunteer to go in, but I think we need to do that. That would be fun. I just wanted to thank all the people that put the Pride event together, and I'm sorry I missed it because it was my last class, so I can't skip the last class. Students wouldn't, did like it, but I can't do that. Juneteenth is coming up, Fourth of July fundraising that's been mentioned. I want to thank all the people that were reappointed and serve on government committees. And I did want to ask, with Mr. Rivaldi's comments earlier, can we get that on as an agenda item, so maybe we can bring him back to talk to us and move it forward?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And looking forward to other wonderful Bridgewater events.
Great. Thank you. So I'll wrap us up with a few comments. We will put on the agenda the charter changes and speak to that. There is a plan there, and I would be happy to talk about that after. The Fourth of July, as others have said, you know, it's an event for our community, but it's also something, an event where our community shines to other communities, so people come from all over to be part of Bridgewater on that day, and so being able to kind of hit that marker is really important, and really appreciate all the efforts of people and businesses in town to help us get there. Others have said the Juneteenth flag raising is on 6:15. It would be great to see people there to support that as well. I also was incredibly impressed by the speeches at the Pride flag raising. I think we have some amazing students, youth, and adults in our town, and that was an event where kind of the best of us came through, so it was great. I'd also like to congratulate the graduating seniors in Bridgewater. Saw a lot of balloons and signs in front yards. It's an exciting day, I think, for a lot of, a lot of those teens. And then there's the last point. Juneteenth celebration is on Saturday, 6:17, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Bridgewater Middle School. There are a lot of kind of activities there. It's a day of celebration, also a day of learning, and we will have a counselor table there as well, if anybody wants to stop by and talk to us about the town or just get to know us a little bit better. You know, feel free, we'll have sort of rotating members of the council on there, but I'll certainly be there. So I think that is, that is it. We do not have executive session this evening, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, oh, we have to do a voice vote, right? Still learning. Could we have a voice vote?
That's you.
That's, oh, no, sorry. I was thinking roll call. We can do it with a voice vote? All right, can we have a voice vote then? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. All those opposed say nay. All those abstaining say aye. All right. Ah, so close to a perfect meeting. Thank you all. We are adjourned.